Where'd you get this up there?
What?
Is it our first visit?
Yeah, yeah.
They might have the answer.
Give you some less extra credit.
But this is even, I didn't see that. People can't seem to be stopping. It's something that's not, it can't be a theme. I guess so.
No. Oh, I see the hinges.
It's just a string that we're talking about.
I want to, I want to be all.
Yes.
Thank you for having us.
Oh, thanks for coming. Good to see you.
Excuse me. If the situation is a complication, if they don't stand or bear like the most three guys are, then I can work them out.
We'll have to gesture to them.
That's fine. They can move wherever they want as long as they're not sort of off of it from that. Anywhere around will be fine.
Is everybody here? Are you guys all ready?
Yes, yep, they're coming in.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Nice to have a large group of happy people here. I met earlier with the eighth graders both down at Mayor's Park and also down at the Subway to kind of just get a quick overview of their project. I really felt like when people show initiative that it's well worth hearing everything they have to say and they put a lot of work into this. And so I thought it'd be good to get a little, we get a little airtime here. We do film the meetings. Actually, and I'd like to introduce our Recreation Board because they're actually the people that you guys, that, you know, if this moves on, they'll be dealing with you. So we have the Chair, Bruce Campbell, and Steve Etta, and Jeff Phillips.
And Ruth Van Barre.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, and thank you guys for coming. I appreciate it. So if we have representatives here, if we want to start with whichever project you want to start with. If you want to start with the skateboard, that's the Recreation's purview really. So whoever would like to speak on behalf and introduce yourselves and maybe give us a little background on what led up to this or why you started this and all the work you put into it.
I'm Mikey Coveli.
I'm Ryan Merrick.
You know, Bosie Bcheck. We wanted to build a skate park because that's what we like to do and stuff. Yeah, and the further if you have.
Okay, that's a good reason.
There are six million skateboarders in the United States and the closest skate park to Cold Spring is thirty to forty mile, minutes away. We are taking a discover, create, innovate class and these are the people in the class. Me, Mikey Coveli, Ryan Merrick, Bosie Bcheck, and fourteen others. In our class, we had to pick something that we were passionate in, something that would help the community. We're in eighth grade Howley Middle School and we want to build a skate park.
When the nice weather hits, usually people start to skateboard in town and ruin the curbs around town too.
Excuse me, just for a second, just speak up a little louder so we can hear you, okay? Thank you.
And, or should I restart?
Yeah, yeah, restart.
When the nice weather, weather hits, people start to skateboard in town and ruin the curbs around town. And kids start to come bored and might find themselves in trouble. On average, one skateboarder a week dies in the United States as a result of a skateboarding-related accident. Nearly all these tragedies happen on the streets. A few of us, we have to go to a skate park that is around thirty-four minutes away, like Mikey said. And sometimes it's very difficult to get a ride to the skate park. And this is one of the reasons to build a skate park and also to increase business in Cold Spring.
We want to make a place in Cold Spring for friends and skaters to hang out. We're trying to make a fully functional skate park with all sorts of ramps. During the summer, we love to bike and skate and we usually run out of places. There are twelve ramps, including a grind box, grind rail, quarter pipes, a kicker, and a double, a roller. The area we chose is fifty by sixty feet. The location is Mayor's Park.
And for funding, there's a website named Kickstarter where you raise money by taking in donations. And for maintenance, we will put in money for a maintenance fund and overall the skate park will end up costing around a hundred thousand dollars. And some other skate parks that raised money by, with Kickstarter were Parasite and they wanted twenty-four thousand dollars and they ended up getting around forty-four thousand. And Switch and Signal who wanted eleven thousand and they got thirteen thousand. And in conclusion, this is why we want to build a skate park in Cold Spring.
So just, just stop me for a second. The money that you said they got, that came from private, from where did they come from?
Donations.
From private donations. They were asking for eleven and they got thirteen?
And then also twenty-four and they were asking also for twenty-four and they got forty-four thousand.
Okay, that's from the local, wherever that place was. Okay.
And how much did you say this park would cost?
Around a hundred thousand dollars.
Hard to say though, with a smile on your face. Go ahead, sorry to interrupt you.
All right, that's it. Thank you for our time.
Do you want to introduce your teachers who have been along here?
Ms. Gessen. And Ms. Hartford.
Thank you guys for your time. So where'd you guys ask for, if you have any questions?
Where would it be located at Mayor's Park?
Like, you know, in the right corner, like in the back?
By the railroad tracks? Where is that in, in terms of the basketball court?
Oh, the basketball court's on the other side.
This would be straight back from the pavilion, right in that corner. That's their initial.
Okay. And the basketball court is just...
In the grass area between the pavilion and the tracks, that large opening on...
And would it be lighted or it would be daytime only?
Yeah, daytime only.
And how would you make this yourself or somebody has to come in to make it or how does it get created once you put the money?
Someone has to come in and make it.
So you have to get outside company?
And have you thought of, and scaling back a little if you have to, to, you know, to start the park and maybe, you know, start with a few of the, you know, ramps or whatever is needed? Do you have like a list of incomes for this, like for any of the...
They said they'd like price it by like how, how like big the area is.
So they would just give you one package sounds, or no?
Like what range?
Or could you tell them what you would like to have?
Yeah.
And who is they?
The Tony Hawk Foundation.
If you could only raise this year twenty-five thousand dollars, would you want to go ahead with one or two of the structures or would you wait for the hundred thousand?
I see you just wait so it's only here at one time.
You'd wait until, okay, okay.
What is on the ground, I mean right now it's mud and grass or whatever else, so what is this cement? To make? So that has to be dug out before.
The Rec Board have anything you guys want to say or I don't know how you want to follow up. Like I said, the Rec Board is, it's, they're charged right...
I mentioned maintenance, but did you have the Tony Hawk Foundation, give you an idea about a structure this large, what the annual maintenance might be? And who would perform that?
Well, we were thinking we'd do volunteer work and be like, we lost ourselves, we lost ourselves.
What kind of maintenance is involved?
In case rocks get on there, like just sweep it off and stuff because it can get under the tires and stuff.
And when it rains, like somehow get, like maybe we could put a drain in it so it doesn't all like stay in one spot.
And well thought of.
And my last question is, did the Tony Hawk Foundation give you an idea when some of these are built in public places, what, who pays the insurance on them and what insurance might cost for this type of facility?
I don't think they stayed there anymore. I don't think they stayed there on the website.
Okay. Is that something you might want to consider investigating?
Is there any possibility of grant money for anything like this, even?
Of what?
Grant money, grant money is like a, a little money you would get from like politicians or people involved in an organization like this where you don't have to raise it, it'll be given. So maybe you could get a grant for ten thousand dollars to get you started.
Oh, no, well, we haven't like, no, we haven't like talked to them yet.
I mean, that's something that we, you know, you could look into, I think, which may...
Somebody's, it's good presentation. Over all the years that I was, either was on the Village Board or on Recreation, we've had other proposals from two other classes. I'm just saying that it's been here before, not to this degree where they had a presentation like you put out here. So it's, it's good that you put that out there just for the sake of new Rec members that haven't really dealt with requests like this before. I think Steve Etta, one of the longest Rec members in the village, definitely did. But as you hear some comments from people here, whether it's maintenance, liability, the site itself is a good site. Just to let you know, there is some wetness that we experienced down in that corner at different times throughout the year. So all these little things is what eventually you can meet with the Recreation again, the committee, and then we can go over these things so you can put a plan together on addressing each one of these issues. And at that point, we update the Village Board with our recommendation and they would probably make the decision on it. But it's, it's a good plan. It's something like I said, that had been presented to the Village Board or the Recreation Commission before and never really got anywhere because of all the little obstacles that you may have run into with trying to get this thing established. Especially the cost of a hundred thousand dollars or whatever, it's a lot of money to raise, you know. The only other part is the supervisor, supervision while you're, while you're skating down. That's another piece you should put in your notes that we would ask about. That all falls in line with the liability and everything else insurance wise. Nothing you have to think about tonight, but something that we'll be talking about in the future. So when you put this plan together and it's approved or not approved, that we covered everything, you know, so.
I think one other thing that's nice about it is because there are bathrooms there. But the other part is that those bathrooms have been vandalized and need continuous work. So that's something I want to think about is, you know, it's, it is where it is, way out in the back, you know, is vandalism, psychotism at that one in Mayor's Park, you know, going to be one of your maintenance upkeep issues, unfortunately. But you have to think of the whole picture. We're just bringing those things to...
One question to you guys, Bruce. The basketball area, does that get used at all or could that be transformed into something for both or use...
Possibly could. There's space there as well, but I think they have to definitely coordinate with the baseball team.
Right.
Since there's no fence out there, they wouldn't be able to have the skaters out there while there's a baseball game going on. And almost the area where they're at, they have to be concerned about foul balls over into that area while the Howley Bowl game was going on.
I'm just thinking of the place is already paved out there. That would save the cost of excavating and... The basketball doesn't get, I mean, I've never seen anyone down, well, actually I've seen a couple people down there. I'm not saying they'll, I'm just asking if, if that's an option, it would save worth of their money, I would imagine.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I mean, I brought this up to the A.D., but I'm just talking about something else on the ball field as far as the maintenance they do down there and I'll bring that up in our Rec meeting tonight. But when we talk about the square footage of the area that you want, it might be a consideration to look at what Dave's talking about because the other area does get a little wet. Which might cause more money to the project because of the structural part that you have to do so you don't sink or the dampness and the whole thing down in that corner. Also, anything around that project, it's going to have to be maintained, whether it's weed whacking the lawn around it or whatever that might, might mean. You mentioned rocks on them. And then the whole thing, like I said earlier, I hate to sound like these negative things that came up over the years, but they're the things that we have to address no matter what board addresses it. It's noise, it's liability, it's the maintenance of it, and all that type of thing. So I know you kids get excited with it, but those are the things that we all make a decision on to make sure that it's the right decision for you and for everyone, you know.
Fudders. Fudders, people who know the side of the fudges.
The other thing is, as a, as a village and as a Rec Department, we really should be involved in having activities for you guys and younger people. And that's one of the things we brought up more and more about the whole opioid addiction and where we're at with that and not having any place or anywhere for anyone to go. Leads to boredom or whatever. And so, you know, it would be nice to have something that, that would be used and that, you know, that's, we could be proud of and the people could invest their time. So I'd like to thank you for all your efforts on it. I think like Bruce said, we do look at the negative stuff or the stuff that's going to cost us, you know, what we have to do. We can't just say, yeah, go ahead. I, you know, I think, you know, those guys can discuss it at their meetings and we can move ahead. But you guys did a great job and just keep, you know, staying invested in, you know, what you like and keep going after it. And we'll see, and we'll do what we can to help you here. And start working on maybe some fundraising ideas and how you're going to get a square bit of money, so.
Thank you. Nice to have you. Nice to have you.
Okay, next up we have the Subway, which we have a flip top here also, so.
Our names are Eden, Sydney, and Madison, Megan, and Patrick. We're in eighth grade at Howley Middle School and we are in Ms. Gessen's DCI class.
Our intent with this project is to create a cleaner and more welcoming attraction for our town with the tunnel. And we presented this idea to Mrs. Gessen in September and we've been working on it and researching it ever since and we also created a model. But it's a little hard to show you it now because we have to like flip it over and like show you the inside. So at the end, when we're done, if you want to see the inside, because there's art on the inside, we can show you when we're all done.
Um, in September, we decided that we would pick this project to do in Ms. Gessen's DCI. And then November, we went down to the mayor and we looked down at it and we saw that it was very old. It was built in nineteen twenty-nine and it didn't really look like it's been renovated since. The lights are all old, the walls are cracking and the floor is covered in garbage, like not covered, but it has garbage on it. And we decided we could make it better. So we built a model to scale and we would like to replace the light bulbs with LED bulbs to make it brighter. Paint colorful murals on the walls and inspiring messages on the stairs. We would also like to put trash cans in the tunnel with scented trash bags. And we know this project is not possible at the time, so we would like to start working in the spring.
Um, we researched how much the stuff for the tunnel would cost. And the paint would cost about forty dollars per gallon. The light bulbs would be fifteen dollars for two bulbs and we need five. And the trash bags for fifty glad scented bags, it would be eleven dollars. And we were thinking like once a week, somebody who, whoever's in charge of like the maintenance now could change the trash bags in the winter and then twice a week in the summer because it would get more use. And we were also thinking like if the town has somebody like checking for graffiti now, they could just continue to do that once we painted the murals. And we did research and we found out that the tunnel is about eight hundred square feet and one gallon of paint would cover four hundred square feet.
Oh, we are in the two thousand eighteen DCI class and this is what we'd like to do.
Okay, well, nice, nice job again, very nice job. The, I think one of the things we talked about was, I think you had mentioned stairs and if you go down there, you'll see how the salt and stuff will deteriorate that, whatever you do there quickly. And so if you go down now, you'll see how the walls are kind of glazed over in a lot of areas with like moisture and whatever. So whatever we do, we have to work with the highway on it and, and get the right paints and there's going to have to be some prep work, which we, somebody would probably, you know, we'd probably have to do or do for you guys so that you can, you know, do the painting. I think if you guys came up with drawings of what you, exactly what you'd like to do for us on, on a piece of paper that you could send to us, is that possible?
It's in the tunnel. There's like two different ones and then the...
You can, you can leave a work of them, come down.
I looked in the, it looks great.
I like the messages on the stairs.
Yeah.
No, it's not, no, it seems to be like those discover, create, innovate.
Did you research, um, different kinds of paints, or something to put over the paint that would be like, help the paint to last longer than just like, you know, different or something because it was kind of rough down there with the weather and everything? I'm sure there would be something and, and I'm not...
We did. I think the paint is supposed to be for like outside work, so it's meant to go against the, the...
So you would start this in the spring, you said?
Yeah.
I, I'm all for it. We'll talk about it, you know, before we give you a lecture tonight, but I don't see any reason why not to. I think, like I said, the stair stuff, I mean, you'd have to be, don't be disappointed if you paint stuff and it looks good and it's not going to be there a short time after, like the stairs. And I would take another look at it, go down there and also get, find a painter or to go up to our paint store and maybe get some, some ideas on the different kinds of paints or what you might have to do on the wall so that, you know, whatever you do lasts. So it's probably a cement paint, it's probably something like the cement paint that's waterproof also or to choose for... So I would do research on that and, and we'll be back in touch with you, but I think it's a great idea and so, thank you very much. And we'll talk to the highway and see what we can do down there to, you know, kind of help the cracks and holes and lighting and see what we can do with that part of it. But if you guys did the painting, then that would be great. Anything from the board?
How many people would be involved in painting the walls because that's a, it's pretty big?
Well, we're not going to be in this class for the rest of the year really, but we could like do it after school and then probably like the other DCI class can help us with it.
Is it something you could get a art teacher involved in?
Probably.
No, we don't like estimate.
Seems to me that that could be a good option for...
Oh, no, no, I thought they had a number on it.
I mean, if you're going to get another class involved, you better make sure you've got the drawings and they're on board with the same.
It'd be, it'd be great if you could have a, a drawing and put it in the office so that everybody who comes into the office can see what, what the students are doing.
Very nice.
Very, very nice. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Do, do you have a paper that they're reading from? Is there a, is there a summary of the two projects or anything? Your steps are falling.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Come back and pull this in a second.
Okay, not a problem.
So sorry, I missed the first presentation. Thank you. Thank you.
Just a little note on our agenda sheet here. Fran had put November and obviously it's not November, so.
I'm going to tell you.
She wants to go backwards in time to get elected again in November.
No, 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 no.
Next is approve a contract renewal with Managed Technologies for IT Support for a one-year period commencing February first. Total is forty-three hundred and twenty dollars. I believe it's up four hundred from last year and we hadn't gotten a raise or it was minimal the year before. Anyone want to speak anything more on that? Have any more information?
No, it's, I did, we looked at it, I think it looks fine. It's no different, it's up slightly. The PC twenty-five dollar monthly charge hasn't changed, it's just the server charge, it's gone up slightly.
I also talked to Michelle and she said it was like a deal, so.
Yeah, he's there when we need him.
And this doesn't cover police, that's a separate contact.
It doesn't cover justice, they have to...
So I'll make a move, a, yeah, a motion. A motion to approve the contract renewal with Managed Technologies.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Next is approval advancement of five PTO days for Village Clerk Jeff Vidakovich. Vidakovich, sorry. Still don't know how to say his name. As you may or may not know, Jeff was been in the hospital, was in the hospital for more than a week and is now out and home and doing some rehab. He had pneumonia and then complications of pneumonia. So anyway, we're glad that he's back at home. Should be back in a, in a week or so. But because of the amount of time he's worked, he needs some advanced PTO days. So we had done this once before. I believe we advanced that on highways. Any discussion on this? I'll make a motion to advance Jeff Vidakovich five P.O. days with the understanding that for whatever reason he does not come back to the village, that those days would be paid back to us.
Second motion.
All in favor? Lynn, are you ready for us or should we do like song and dance?
Can we do a little song and dance?
Not really.
Well, I do, I'm not quite there yet.
Correspondent.
Do we have a correspondent? Do we have correspondence? No, you can.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Sure.
We got an email this week, and it's, uh, subject to village garbage collection times. Says, "To the mayor and the trustees, I understand that you've been, you've begun to take up the issue of changing the time that garbage is collected in the village. I'd like to express my very strong support for that effort. Scheduling garbage collection before eleven P M or after four A M would reduce the weekly interruption of soup of both the residents of the village and the village employees during, doing the work. This is extremely important. A single poor night of sleep can impair a person's immune system by up to seventy percent. Sleep interruption increases a person's changes of inju, uh, person's changes of injury in getting in a car accident. The four to five hour period in the middle of the sleep cycle is the most important for our sleep. We also don't generally notice when we are impaired due to lack of sleep, which makes a lack of sleep even more dangerous. There is a considerable amount of research in this area, so for the sake, so for the sake of the health and well-being of the residents and the collectors, and to do everything we can to protect the safety of the collectors, I ask that the collection be moved to a time after four A M. Doing so would deliver many benefits, thank you," and it's from James Gepner. So while that wasn't the issue of the village garbage collection changes that are going on this week, it's an interesting issue. Friend, who wrote the letter again? James Gepner, G E P P N E R.
Regarding the garbage collection, when I first announced that we knew the, the kind of pushback we would get or the initial reaction, which is usually knee jerk, and I was right. And so you can do whatever you, if you want to prevent that from happening, but it doesn't matter. But I would like to say what we're actually doing is although other people have numbers and some people's math is incredible, we're gonna do our own independent study on this and we are gonna, and so Royal has agreed to do a test run for us. There's no obligation whatsoever. They'll be doing this test run on next Tuesday. All of the pickups are, will be on the same schedule. There's not gonna be recycling like we thought. There was a misunderstanding between Jim Constantino, who represented Royal, and us that they were on the same day, so they were gonna pick up recycling on the same day. So we're just gonna be picking up garbage on that day with their vehicle and our guys will be helping them, the guys from Highway. This will give them an idea how long it takes, what's involved, you know, and the time it takes so that they can come up with a price. Once they come up with a price, then we can go from there. Right now, we don't have that number, I'm not relying on other people's numbers. I don't think we should, a lot of that's outdated. Some of it might be right, some of it might be wrong, but what we want to do is get the number from them, what their offer will be, and then go from there, and then look at everything. Look at what it costs us, how many days, and the pros and cons of it. And there are some of each, and, you know, we realize that. One of the things is not only, I mean, there's, is it going to be cost savings? That may, may or may not be. And if it isn't, how would we deal with that either way? With the residents and with taxing, so that's been, you know, an issue we have to look at. How we would deal with any savings or cost if we moved it into just private contracts. The other thing is the amount of service that we're getting from the Highway. We, right now, at least two days are taken up by garbage and recycling. So depending on the days, that could mean a lot of things get pushed off and so we really don't, don't have an efficient system there. There's a lot of things like side oil grinding and leaf, you know, leaves in the fall, that are all interrupted, and snow removal, depending on if there's a snowstorm right after the day that garbage happens or whatever, all those things have to be taken into consideration, and that's what we're doing. So there's, there's no move one way or the other. I would like to see it happen, but I'm not gonna, you know, push something forward without getting all the information. And there will be public hearings, and it won't be on Facebook public hearing, it'll be actually here. And, you know, people can, you know, register their concerns and, you know, we can explain it more once we get that number, but right now we don't have it. So next Tuesday, Royal will be picking up garbage, they're gonna start at five o'clock, not one o'clock in the morning like our guys do. And then they'll get back to us with, you know, with a price, you know, or what they, the options for their service will be.
Will they be able to estimate what it costs us to pick up recycling too? Is that?
Yeah, they'll be able to do that.
Okay, just kind of based on what they pick up?
Right, yeah.
Are they picking up recycled the same day or no?
No.
Yeah.
No, so how do you?
Recycling's gonna, what's that?
Are they gonna do another trial run for recycling?
No, they'll be able to tell with the same, it's the same run.
No, I understand.
Right. And also I believe that recycling, I think according to Jim, who I just talked to, now you have to pay thirty-five dollars a ton, and I think it used to be free, or they actually paid you, so. So that just, not that we have a lot of tonnage, but it is starting the cost.
Recycling should be a little bit quicker.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot later, and most people don't have big bins, but. But the thing with theirs, they have one guy and they have the automated, you know, dumper so that with their cans, they can just, you know, hook them on and dump it. So they don't need three guys on the back that we have, so. Anyway, we'll calculate all the costs and that's what, that's what we're attempting to do. How's that, Lynn? Did I stammer enough? Confuse things in that?
I think somebody needs to sing a song.
What that?
Sing a song.
You don't want any of us doing it.
You don't want me doing that. My brother was here, he's not. I didn't get those jeans.
More than halfway through the year, you're the chief.
Our attorney is coming, and after this meeting, we'll close this meeting. We're gonna have a go into for advice from counsel on legal issues, pending legal issues. And we won't be coming back out or continuing any meeting at that point.
And you reach no decisions.
Right. Anything else for anyone?
No, it's been so much fun lately.
Had a lot of fun lately.
Oh, the, the, I got the M O U back for the hydroelectric thing.
Okay.
And the test corrections on it, and I've sent that back to their engineer. So I guess we'll be hearing back from them fairly soon. Pass that, or not.
Or anything from the audience? Make something up. Yes, we will, the reinstings and stuff will be coming down hopefully this week, good question.
The reinsts are supposed to be coming down tomorrow.
Oh, I thought.
We do wait for Fulham County and their lift, and again, garbage got in the way and cold weather, so they didn't get to them.
The other thing I would say, again, a couple of calls in the office, or I guess it's been on Facebook more than in the office, about the color of the water, and everybody's concerned about the color of the water. And Greg has tested and retested and tested around the village, and the water is fine and it's perfectly fine to drink. And he was in the office today, and people are complaining, from what I hear, about, you know, my kids don't wanna take a bath because the bath water is yellow. Well, if your hot water is yellow, it's not the water from, not the water coming into the house. Let me see if I get this straight. It's, you need to, you need to drain your tank.
Yeah.
You need to drain your tank in the house, because the only water that comes into the house from the village is the cold water. Once it's hot, it goes through your tank, and if you haven't cleaned your tank, whatever residue might be in there may cause the water to change colors. So you need to drain your tank, or if you can't get to draining your tank, you need to get a plumber. If it's the cold water, run it, run it, but it is safe to drink, I'm still drinking it. Greg has checked various places around the village, and he's been sending them out on a regular basis for testing and everything is perfectly fine to drink.
They just mix up months, you might put November now.
Yeah, it may be November, but it's still the water.
What was the cause of the power outage today? Has that happened?
Oh, God, you're as bad as, I don't know, call Central Hudson.
They were here.
Dave said to ask questions. He was feeling bad.
They were, they were in town today, so I don't know.
We actually, I actually.
I don't know if it was something they did, I know they're running poles and wires down Constitution Drive right now, which went out, anything on the south side of Main Street seemed to be out, the whole way over, so.
Then High Street was also.
The light on three oh one was out after I left, after I saw Fran.
Really?
This afternoon, whatever time it was, this afternoon. Three oh one, that light was out there too.
Three oh one and nine, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. On my follow-up, on Third Street, yeah.
Across the street had.
Let me, who said the south, south side of?
Yeah, across Central Hudson, and, you know, within like, what, an hour and a half, two hours, we were back up. Then I just had to figure out how to reboot the computers, you know. I don't know, but the villagers were coming in asking me what the problem was, like, undoubtedly not Central Hudson.
Try harder next time.
I know.
Get out there in a bucket and fix it.
So what are they saying?
I guess maybe once, maybe they'll be good jobs. Get the automated system.
Yeah, they're running, they're running the wires.
Blew out the whole thing, but.
The guy had a dead bad look on his face.
But I thought the village.
Cells are open.
Good. Right, yeah, yeah.
I'm dealing with my, you know.
He sees the doctor on Thursday. Since he's known, he hasn't needed to use oxygen, which is good. He just wants to get the tanks out of the house. No, he hasn't smoked since the Friday.
Now we're just waiting to do this batch approval, and then we're good.
Almost there. He says he isn't waiting for it, you know, up until he came home. He didn't have the oxygen until he moved from the chair up, so he didn't really care less.
Do you want any medication?
No.
Although she gave him a lower dose, so I don't think it was that.
That's amazing. I make a motion to approve batch number forty-four fifty for a total amount of sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and mine sets.
I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session with attorney for. We have to close the meeting, or can we close it out there?
Well, you can go into executive session since it's pending litigation. You can close it now, or you can keep it open, but you're not gonna make any actions after you've done the session.
Okay.
We can stay that.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye. Pleasure to all the color.